This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. Call on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Counselman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Heckles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we're thankful that you've given us another day. We are thankful for the opportunity to be gathered here again. We ask that your hands be involved with the administration as they go through changes. We ask that you continue to watch over the free world. We ask that you continue to give comfort for those who have loved ones fighting for justice. We ask that you continue to keep our minds focused on each other for the betterment of each other, that we may be on one accord as we seek to better ourselves and our future. We will be ever grateful and thankful to give you the praise, the praise and the honor and the glory in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on August 19.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the votes?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of August 15 through the 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the votes?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Ms. Judy Atkins to come up, please. And Ms. Jane Hicks. These two ladies, if you want something done and you give them, put them in charge, you better be ready to help them do it, because they're worthy. Whereas every year thousands of children across America are diagnosed with cancer, an often life-threatening illness that remains the leading cause of death by disease for children under the age of 15. The causes of pediatric cancer are still largely unknown, and though new discoveries are resulting in new treatments, this heartbreaking disease continues to scar families and communities in ways that you never fully, that you never fully heal from. Although work continues in the fight to understand, treat, and control childhood cancer, with researchers around the world pioneering new therapies and exploring the root causes of the disease, driving progress that could reveal cures or improved outcomes for patients, help still does not come soon enough for many of our sons and daughters. And too many families suffer pain and devastating loss. We wish to remember the young lives taken too soon and to stand with the families facing childhood cancer today, whereas we pay tribute to the families, friends, professionals, and communities who lead their strength, who lend their strength to children fighting pediatric cancer, and hope that their courage and commitment will continue to move us toward new careers, healthier outcomes, and brighter future for America's youth. Therefore, I, Sherman Gattin, the Mayor of the City of, the City of Gadsden, and the Council of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, do hereby join in proclaiming September 2014 as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Gadsden, and encourage everyone to join in reaffirming our commitment to fighting this terrible disease.
We, as grandparents of children with cancer, just wanted to thank you all so very much for the proclamation, because it helps bring awareness, and awareness will help maybe get some more money in so that we can cure childhood cancer. Childhood cancer is the most underfunded of all the cancer researches. We get less than 4 percent from the federal government and less than 3 percent from the American Cancer Association. So we really appreciate you doing this, for calling awareness for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause]
You know, I never miss a chance to say something. I would just like to thank the Mayor and the Council for recognizing doing this proclamation for us and for our children. I've worked with most of you in other ways through the years, and I know if I want something done, I come to my councilman. And I'd like to thank especially Mr. Robert Avery. He just did a really good thing for our, one of our schools recently. We saw a need, and Jim called and told him the need, and he said, "I'll take care of it." And he did, and I want to thank him, Bob, Bill, Johnny, Ben, and I haven't worked with you two men, but I'm sure you would be nice to work with. And thank you so much for our proclamation. We are getting a lot of awareness of childhood cancer. And when my 16-month-old grandson was diagnosed, I fell to my knees and said, "God, I know you can make something good out of something bad." And my daughter and son-in-law started 18 ministries, and they work with families whose children have cancer, because they know what to do while they're in the hospital, and the doctors and nurses are talking to them. But when they get home, what do they do? Who do they call? And so, something good did come out of something bad, and I know that with, with your help and the help of everyone, that there will be a cure one day. Thank you.
Mayor, I know Judy will work you to death, so you're absolutely correct. And Ms. Hicks, you just ruined my reputation. Folks don't think I do anything good. I don't know why you said that. But I, well, I appreciate that, and of course, you know, any way I can help young people or anybody, you know, I'll do that. So I really appreciate you letting the public know I do do something.
Mr. President, before we start, let me mention something. I got a call the other day, and, from a lady who watches our, on TV, and she said our audio has a lot to be desired. And would you speak up a little bit, a little louder, right into your microphone, so, so we might improve that image a little bit? And I see David shaking his head in there, he's, he's correct.
Okay.
What'd you say?
Can anybody hear me?
There you go.
Okay, where are we?
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business. We don't have any today. This is a time and place that advertises to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license, Red Lobster O2-92, as a new owner who has applied for a registered retail liquor license at 1725 Rainbow Drive in District 4. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
They just, they just changed owners, that's all.
Yeah. Okay, any other?
I'd like to explain to everyone the criteria for applying for a license. We have four departments that look into that, the building department, zoning, the police, and who else?
Fire.
And the fire department. They all check these out before we issue a license, make sure that they're all up to, to city code and zone properly before we do that. That's the criteria we look at when we issue a license.
Is there any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our finally, our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. King Olive Oil Company has applied for an only and all-premise retail table wine license at 618 Broad Street in District 5. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
A resolution authorizing warning bid number 3267 for coal plant mixed paving material. The coordinator has recommended a warning to bid to Good Hope Contracting Company, and the amount is 84.75 per ton. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is the material that we use to fix potholes with, and we, our Public Works tells us that if you see a pothole, excuse me, if you see a pothole called Public Works, and within 24 hours, they'll have it fixed. So, don't just grapple about the pothole, call them, they'll come and fix it. 24 hours, yeah. That's what Mr. Hilton tells me.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates. This is for engineering design and bidding of a 2,000-gallon above-ground fuel facility for the Couche River Front Park project. The amount is $18,000. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Chad, you want to talk to that?
You told the same thing you told us upstairs.
Yes, sir. This is, this would be located between the railroad bridge and our bake shop on the little grass lot. The, the actual tank would sit off the river towards the parking lot where you could pull up and fuel from the parking lot, and we're also seeking permission from ADEM to put a, a tank over the river on a floating dock so that you could just drive up and, and fuel from the water as well, if you're not parked at that parking lot.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a ordinance assenting to annexation of property.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration.
Move for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is, we actually passed a similar ordinance on last, last week, annexing property in District 7, I believe it was. So again, this is, this is a similar incident in that it was discovered that this property was not in the city limits of Gadsden, and so the residents have asked that they be annexed into the city, city limits of Gadsden.
Okay, is there any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous, unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property located at 1501 Fourth Avenue for the state of Alabama in the amount of $100.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Second.
No discussion.
This is an empty lot that we, we can acquire from the state for $100 and hopefully get it back on the tax roll by moving it on to somebody that wants it.
That we don't.
We need to do a lot more there.
Is there any other?
Mr. President, I have one.
Wait a minute.
Hold on this one, Ben.
Was there another one? I said, sure, I got.
Slow down, son, slow down.
Discussion, now, really.
Okay.
You want to discuss this?
No, no, I don't want to.
Okay, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Now then, Ben, you're up.
I don't know what in the world I was thinking about, but it evidently passed right on by. It must be my age. And don't say anything, Billy Harris.
It is.
I do have an ordinance I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's an ordinance amending fiscal year 2014 budget for the acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, that's the JAG grant, in the amount of $43,513.
Second.
Those in, those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration.
So moved to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a grant that we're, we're asking for, that we share with the county. I often like to remind people when this grant comes up that it has a Gadsden connection. This was a police officer who was shot and killed in New York City, and the first President Bush set up this, this grant program. But a young lady was a witness to the king who had the hit off, the hit done on the police officer, and the young lady was from Gadsden, so they were able to catch the killer, put him in prison. Titbit of history information for your record.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Parks and Recreation?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got an event I want to promote today. This weekend, Saturday and Sunday, we're having the Turtle Island Powwow Native Indian demonstrations up at Nakalula Falls. This will be the first Powwow up at the falls in probably 15 or 20 years, but the, we're leasing the property to this group to come up and do a Powwow. They're gonna have, I'll just read you a little bit of what they're doing. It says, "Come and enjoy the beat of the drum and the songs of our ancestors." They're gonna have demonstrations for archery, food and refreshments available, Cherokee dancers, arts and craft vendors, and it says, "No alcohol, drugs, or politics." Pretty interesting. But anyway, it's gonna be at Nakalula Falls from 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday and Sunday, and it's $5 for adults, over 65 is $2, and children 6 to 14 is $2, and a family's $10. So, anyway, they set all the rules and the groundwork for this event, but we're excited about them having it up there. We're, we're providing some transportation and stuff. It's gonna be up at the old landfill on the practice fields, so that'll be something real interesting this, this weekend up at the falls. Also, while y'all were in pre-council, my daughter texts me and invite, she's a theater of Gadsden, she's involved with it, and she's co-director of The Kill a Mockingbird, and she's inviting the mayor and the council and your spouse or friend to a special preview on Wednesday night, next Wednesday, at 7:30. So it's free to you, if you want to come out to see a special preview of The Kill a Mockingbird, that'll be playing at the Ritz Theater in Alabama City. She wanted me to make sure I invited you. And, and also too, by the way, to the, and that's all I have on that, but the, the mayor did not make me take off yesterday and politic and campaign in my city truck, my personal truck, or any truck. I chose to take off yesterday and to, to do that, because I didn't want one of the other three, I'm gonna be candidates, leading this great city. So contrary to what you might have heard yesterday, I took a vacation day.
All right. I'm sorry now, I started that rumor. And you'd come home, huh?
Unless they're the best policy.
Yeah, yeah, I confess.
Remarked by the mayor and the council, you want to start, Mayor?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the voters who voted yesterday, the ones that voted for me and the ones that voted against me, for being in the process. You know, the turnout was light, seems like it gets lighter every year, but everybody would like to encourage you to get more involved. We got a big election statewide offices and all coming up in November. It seems like there's a lot of voter apathy out there right now, and, you know, if you think, "Well, I don't care, I'm not gonna vote," sure enough, who you didn't vote for might be the one you need in there the most. So, you know, just, just be thinking about that, pay attention, and try to turn out and vote. That's what, that's what we, that's our freedom to go vote, so we need to all exercise that. I'd also like to congratulate my opponents on a hard-fought race. I do wish it could have been a little more positive, more factual, and less divisive. If you're running for mayor of not only Gadsden but any city, and your campaign is based on negativity, false statements that are not true, you're not helping the city's image, and that's not a good thing. So, that's, you know, it's not fair to the city employees, and it's not fair to the citizens. So if you get in a race somewhere, you know, be positive, have a plan, lay it out there where everybody knows what it is. Don't just be negative all the time. And I've enjoyed working the last eight years with Robert Avery and Billy Harris, and I want to thank both of you for all the cooperation and help and support y'all have given me. And also, I want to congratulate Ms. Toles and Thomas Worthy for their election, and I look forward to working with them to make things stay positive and keep moving forward, and let's keep the progress going. Thank you.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would start out by thanking those supporters of mine who have stood by me for the past four years during this council term. I really appreciate the support that I have gotten, I appreciate the support that we received yesterday. It will never be forgotten. I would also like to congratulate Dr. Toles on her victory in becoming the city council person in District 1. I'd also like to congratulate Thomas Worthy for becoming the city council representative in District 3. I'd also like to congratulate all of the incumbents who have been re-elected to serve the great citizens of Gadsden again. I, I wish you nothing but success. You will be hearing just a little bit more from me between now and the end of our term. But I, I will say this, your city is good. Your city has been very well maintained. The mayor is very right. The mayor and his council have worked together, and I'm gonna give you a couple of instances just here recently why you can say that we are one of the best cities in the state of Alabama. If you heard the news, Birmingham is in an uproar down there because they're, they're finally realizing that they've got to cut personnel costs there also, so, you know, they just passed an ordinance where the retirees are gonna have to pay 30% more of their insurance. They just did that in Birmingham. Okay. Anniston, right down the street, is gonna have to cut services. They're gonna take, they're gonna, they're gonna have attrition there, that they're not gonna replace people as they retire or as they come off payroll, so they're gonna be short of services because of that financial status. Your city has not done any of that? Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I take that back. They've been fiscally responsible for your, with your, with your tax dollars, but at the same time, there has not been a service cut back anywhere in your city, so you are, you, you should be thankful that your city has done as well as it has done in the past four, eight years. That being said, I, I, I will continue to, to go to battle for Litchfield Middle School. We still need your attention over there in that school, as, as a community. Become involved and get, get with, get with the people at Litchfield Middle School. I have, I have, I was, I was made aware yesterday of an incident, of an event, and the gentleman was trying to get in touch with me on April, on August the 2nd, I believe it was, of an event that was being held in Hershey, Pennsylvania. It was a Hershey's Track and Field Games 2014 North American Finals. There were kids from all over the United States, and, and America, and the world participated in the Hershey Games two weeks ago on Saturday, three weeks ago on Saturday. And I'm, I'm here to tell you today that Kamari Smith, the grandson of John and Delma Smith, won fourth place in the 100, 100-yard relay, 100-yard dash. And that's a very complimentary thing for the city of Gadsden, he was competing with people from all over the world, so, and he came in fourth place. Kamari is 11 years old, I believe, and he's to be congratulated, and that, those are the type people that we, we represent, and we have here in the city of Gadsden, the city of champions. I just wanted to, to, to thank John Smith and John and Delma for, for their involvement in their child, in their grandchild's success. And, and lastly, you know, Labor Day weekend's coming up. I want everybody to have fun, you know, parties, picnics, you know, have a good time and enjoy the holidays, the last, last summer holiday for the year. But at the same time, be, be mindful of the fact that there's a campaign going on, dry sober, get pulled over. I'm gonna encourage you not to drink and drive during this, during this great event, you know, and just enjoy it and have fun. Thank you very much.
David?
Thank you, Mr. President. Far be it for me to, to try to steal any, any, any limelight from, from an announcement, but I would like to point out that Kamari is a relative of mine, and I am, and we are, we are extremely proud of him.
And mine.
Absolutely. He's gonna be a great, he is a great athlete, he's gonna be a great little athlete going forward. We'll be hearing that name in years to come, for sure. The election, it's over, and I'm so glad that it's over. There's nothing more sacred than that right for us to vote, and, and I, and I'm always excited about the, the opportunity to be out, be able to go out and cast a ballot, and to see people go out and cast a ballot, so, you know, that's, that's always a good thing. I want to take this opportunity to, to recognize somebody who, who's gonna kill me later for even bringing up his name, but my campaign manager is here, Frank Koller. He's supported me as a friend and, and family member for the last two political campaigns, and I really appreciate him for all the hard work that he and my father did in this campaign, and he's giving me the fist, so I, but, and I do want to take this opportunity to publicly, publicly thank my family for standing by me. You know, it's, it's hard enough to put up with me without all of the, the extra stuff, but they've, they've put up with me and my very demanding professional career. They've put up with me and the fact that I'm always traveling and, and not always there. My wife has, has essentially raised two teenage daughters by herself, and, and I love that woman. I've loved her and been married to her for 20 years. In fact, as of next week, actually, we'll be celebrating having been married for 20, 20 years. And I so appreciate her for just being there for me, and she's an amazing woman. Anybody that can put up with me for 20 years, there's gotta be something said about that publicly. So, and I really, really appreciate her, and, and so, thanks to all of those folks who supported us. And, and I'll piggyback on what the mayor said earlier. Thanks to everybody that just went out and participated in the process, whether you voted for me or against me. You know, I really appreciate those who participated, and, and I love representing District 2 because they're just some wonderful people. And I, I wanted to go through the process of calling names, but I, I think I'll stay away from that, because I'm gonna miss some folks that are very near and dear to me. But one thing, one name I will throw out there, and, and I've dealt with her in the last two political cycles, and that's Ms. Dot, or Teresa Dot Robinson. And many of you may know her, and many of you may not. Ms. Robinson is, she's blind, she's sight impaired, and each year I, I pick, or each election cycle, I pick Mrs. Robinson up and take her to the polls. She doesn't let that stop her. She doesn't let that stop her. The fact that she can't see doesn't prevent her from voting, and she reaches out to me to let me know, "I want to go vote. Can you arrange for transportation for me, Councilman Williams?" And I don't mind at all. And I, and if, if a sight impaired or blind individual can make their way to the polls, those of us that have our sight and the function of our limbs should, should go to the polls and vote. So again, the mayor mentioned the, the statewide elections in November. Folks, let's please go out and vote. Please go out and vote and participate. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Robert? Robert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I've enjoyed working with you, plan on still working with you, I'm not going anywhere, I just want to be up here, but that don't mean I won't be working. Most people tend to forget that before I became a city council member, I was very actively involved in my community, and of course, when I ceased to be a city council member, I will still be actively involved in my community, you can bet your bottom dollar on that. I too want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who went to the polls yesterday, whether they were in District Three or any other district, like Councilman Williams said, it's a sacred thing. A lot of people have fought and died for that opportunity for us to participate in the process, and I just wish that more people would have done that on yesterday. I don't have the numbers, I know it was a low percentage of our city voters who turned out, and so whoever gets up this morning and your person is not in, please don't gripe if you didn't go to the polls, it's your fault, because if you didn't go to the polls and vote for the person you wanted to be in office, or voted for or against the seven-day cell, then it's your fault. But we do appreciate those who did go to the polls. I want to congratulate all of the officials up here who were re-elected, and I know it's a tough job, you know, serving on these positions is great, it's just the election process that makes it bad, and of course, we just went through one, so I know what you guys have gone through and what you guys will be going through, so we really appreciate you. Dr., oh, there she is, Dr. Toles out there, congratulations and my condolences all at the same time. You're now in that ring, and so you'll, but you're gonna be okay, I think you're gonna be able to handle it very, very well. I want to congratulate several people before I congratulate my opponent, because they did a heck of a job in working with him. First of all, Mr. Fred Zachary, who has spent the last two, three years crucifying me on the radio, I think he did one heck of a job, because he was able to turn people, and I just want to congratulate him, that's an art. I want to congratulate Mr. Mac Butler, Representative Mac Butler, who spent a lot of money in my district, who don't even live in this city, because he did a heck of a job with my opponent. Now I want to congratulate my opponent, who did a heck of a job, and was fairly clean and fairly clear, but now I hope he and his wife will move back into the city, and move back into the district that they so care about, and that they say they're gonna represent. So I'm looking forward to working with them when they do move back into the city, so I thank you.
I've enjoyed a lot of years, and I want to thank the children of the people that first voted for me in District Four. You just can't imagine a loyal, as many loyal people as I have in my district, it's just, it's just mind-boggling, eight terms. They'll be wanting to put in term limits, and I can't thank them enough, I really can't, they have worked for me, and I hope I have worked for them, I tried to. And Mayor, one of the things that I saw in nearly every case was fight for crime. How many more policemen have we got now than we had?
Well, when we got here this last term, we had, I mean, the first term we had eighty, we got up as high as a hundred and three. We raised the starting salary and did several things to attract people, and we've had some retire, we need about ten, so if anybody out there is interested in police work, man or woman, former service person, they like those kinds too, we'll be glad to get you up here and let you take the test.
I just want people to know that we constantly are fighting that situation. It's been real bad lately, and I guess, I don't know why, we don't have that much unemployment, but I don't know where it's coming from, but we will continue to do everything we can to keep that from happening. I've enjoyed working with you, Robert, for twenty-two years.
Oh, Bob, you know, we've been working a lot longer than that. I got something I'm saying, great grant, I mean, no, some of the gratuaries that you have worked.
And Billy, one term, you've done a heck of a job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Dr. Toles, we get to work together again, she was principal of the Donahue School over in East Gadsden, which was in my district, I think, that David stole it from me, and it's not in my district anymore, but I'm gonna, I know I'm gonna enjoy working with you too, looking forward to it. Billy?
Oh, I'd just like to thank everybody that supported me in this election, people that got out and walked the streets with me, and put signs in the yard, helped me financially, I'm very humbled and very appreciative of your help. As you probably know, I'm gonna be in a runoff October the seventh, so I'm pleading with you, come back to the polls again, and let's finish the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to echo what everybody said, Robert, about working with you, it's been an honor and a privilege, I've learned a lot over these past eight years being with you, I know it's not gonna stop, because we're friends, and we're always gonna be friends wherever we are, if I'm here or you're here, whichever one here, we're always gonna be friends, and I appreciate everything you've done for this year, and you're gonna continue to do for this season. I guarantee you I do. Billy, I echo the same for you, it's been good working with you these last four years, you did a tremendous job over in East Gadsden. I appreciate you too, and I appreciate Dr. Toles coming in, working, looking forward to working with her also. We did have an election night party last night at my house, there's probably about a hundred folks in the backyard, we did have music, and it was a great, wonderful time. I appreciate everybody that came out and supported me during this election, I did have a brief hospital stay last Friday, everything went smooth, I was in there in the hospital, and everything carried on, all my people was out working, I should appreciate every bit of those, they was campaigning, doing everything they could, and I appreciate that. And now, I need to turn to the people that's been bad-mouthing me on Facebook. I've gotta get this in, of those people that was talking about me, that talked about me last night, that's been talking about me on Facebook, and it's, they're all, seemed like last night, they was all concerned about what kind of clothing I had on. I am the councilman, wears khaki short pants, a golf shirt, and I wear flip flops a lot in the district. I don't see anything wrong with that, but some of those people that's bad-mouthing me has a problem with it. And actually, all of them know where I live at, they know my phone number, they know how to get in touch with me, and if those people would spend more time trying to help District Six, and trying to work together as they do on this internet and this Facebook stuff, trying to badmouth me, District Six, we could do a whole lot better, I promise you, if we could get everybody working together over there. And please, just don't worry about what I got on, what I wear, just try to come out and help District Six, that's what you need to do, if you got any problems with me or in District Six, you need to come and sit down and talk to me about it. If you don't want to talk to me face to face, you can call the clerk's office, (549) 4518, they can get in touch with you anytime you want to, my cell number's (256) 295-8261, it's public number, it's my personal cellphone, you can call me any day, time you want to, leave a message, if I don't call you back, we'll meet, we'll talk about it, you can come to my house, sit on my front porch, my backyard, anywhere I am, we'll be able to talk about this. But please, the people that's talking about me on the internet, let's get together, and let's work together and make District Six the best place it can be. Thank you.
And Johnny, I wouldn't feel bad, Lee wears flip flops up here every Tuesday, so.
I mean, we just need to spend more time working together in District Six, those few, hey.
Okay, Ben?
I don't know what in the world I could add to all this that's been said, I've written about fifteen or twenty things, and every time I cross them off, I really want to thank my district, of course, the people, the voters up there, the people up there, whether you voted for me or not, it is no relevance now, it's all the same. One, contributors, workers, when you pull it all together, there's some kind of camaraderie there that works for that period of time, and you don't ever forget that, and you don't ever forget them, and you don't ever forget your district, because you're twenty-four seven on that district, you're always available. But I gotta say, that my wife gave me an ultimatum this time, and friend, if I'd have been in a runoff, bless my opponent's heart, I love them both, but if they'd pushed me into a runoff, I probably had a divorce in my family. So I appreciate my opponents that only got forty-three percent of where it is, and I came out with fifty-four, that worked real well for me and my wife, and Barbara, I do appreciate it, I promise, I do thank you a whole lot. The only negative I got, somewhere or other in politics, we have turned the polling places from a traditional sacred voting opportunity into a circus. When you go to the polls, and you got tents up, and folks handing you hot dogs, or donuts, or mints, or whatever the crap that was, how in the world can a man swap a vote for a donut? I could understand a pint of whiskey in nineteen forty-six, you know, but I mean, they're going out there, and it just turned into a circus, not as more, Lee, I want to ask you, if you would, find out about the law, is it federal, state, or city, about the thirty-foot rule, and putting up trampi, trampoline things, and, you know, and all this sort of thing, to get a vote? Do you know, happen to know who handles that particular law?
One sign, one of those. It would be the state.
It would be the state?
Yeah, laws, I think it's the thirty foot, thirty foot distance.
Okay, well, good, and I think Robert could probably get to work on that with all those friends he's got in Montgomery.
Let me throw this in there, Ben, used to, we had a gentleman's agreement, you didn't politic on Election Day, you put it aside, and went to polls and vote, and it's a shame we can't do that now, that's the way it used to be, you didn't politic on Election Day.
Bill, you said gentlemen's.
And ladies.
Okay.
That's kind of the operative term.
That's the operative term.
And in closing, and in closing, Mr. Ashley and Mr. Robinson, really, it was a good, clean operation that we had before five weeks, I think we all had a real good time, but I just want to thank them too, I think they were superb. We ended it last night, and everybody went back to being friends, and I didn't think we were enemies to start with, but everything's fine now, appreciate it.
Mr. President, I'd just like to ask one question of the audience, I mean, just by a show of hands, if you are at some level turned off by the amount of signage that is presented in a political cycle, just raise your hand. If you don't like it, the signs, if you don't like them, that's vast majority of the folks out there. Yeah, we'll do, we'll do something about it, we'll have an opportunity to talk about that, for sure.
Is that it, sir?
I'm in favor of the signs. Name recognition is what you, the big thing, people can't know you, and if you have a sign, they at least know that you're running. And I think it intimidates some of your opponents.
Then intimidate mine, I have more signs than anybody.
Anyway, due to the Labor Day Holiday Monday garbage pickup, will be collected on Tuesday, Monday's garbage will be collected on Tuesday, Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, Thursday's and Friday's route will not be changed. City council will meet next Tuesday, September the second, to canvass the election results and conduct our regular business. The work session will be held at eleven AM, and the council meeting will begin at twelve noon. You get all that? So, to canvass the election.
Yeah, I think that's by law we have to do it at twelve noon, yeah.
Okay, if there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So move.